All right.
I would like to call the order, the City of Sagatuck City Council Meeting for May 22nd, 2023. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag in the United States of America. Lieutenant Paul, Bishop Sanders, One Nation, Underground, End of Insol. Let me repeat the address for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Leo. Louis.
Here.
Muncie.
Here.
Stanton.
Here.
Before.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know if, um, did you hear from Councilmember Leo?
I didn't.
Okay, hopefully she'll swing in at some point. With that, I'll make a brief remark. It's almost game time here in Sagatuck. Memorial Day weekend coming, so I hope we're all ready. So with that, I think we'll probably be talking about if we're ready and I'll turn it over to the city manager, see if he has any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My report is in your agenda packet. No additional comments.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. We're at item six, Agenda Changes. I would like to make a couple of agenda changes. We have Dean Kapiga from Allegan County Commission here. I would like to add Dean as a guest speaker for item seven. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Right. Oh, sorry. That's okay. Thank you, clerk. Thank you.
Mayor, motion to add Dean Kapiga as a guest speaker to the agenda.
Second.
Motion Baldwin, second. Louis, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And one other addition, you do have before you team a kind of a last minute item, but I think it's worth trying to address tonight. It's the Duck Alley Right-of-Way signage request. I would suggest we add that under new business to be item K. And that would be Duck Alley Right-of-Way signage request. Do I have a motion to include that on our agenda for tonight?
I'll make a motion to include the right-of-way signage request by Duck Alley.
Second.
Motion Muncie, second Stanton, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you for that. Great. And with that, does any other council member have an agenda change? Hearing none, we will move on to our guest speaker. Dean, you've got the floor.
Captain, thank you for helping me speak. And just to say, you're bored. We're in here all the time for either for ice cream or sandwiches. I'm sure as everyone goes, they go, this town is just awesome. I mean, what a place, what a place to come to for visitors, but especially for us locals that are, that just have it. So I just thank you for your work in keeping it what it is. Obviously, we're real busy at the county. I just wanted to give you some things that alarm me, not alarm me, but just some things happening. Rob King has put in his resignation as, as judge. Rob used to be the prosecutor. You remember way back when? So I go back with him for years and years and years. So he'll be replaced this year. And just keep in mind that we're replacing two judges next year. Now, we have the new Circuit Court Judge coming on, and then Judge Buck is termed out. So three judges is a big deal as far as who we get and just the importance of that position. I'd also just mentioned that the sheriff came in for his annual report. And he just said some things. I was with the sheriff's department for 30 years, but even like his stats were, they had 25,636 complaint calls for service, the most in its history. He talked about body cameras, how that came in this past year, how it's just alleviated complaints against us as far as he did this. Let's look at the tape. And then he even mentioned if he didn't realize the body cameras, there's just a whole deal of, like a sergeant looking at, and I didn't realize this, a sergeant looking at how his officer responded to someone, looking at a complaint and observing what he did, how he did it to give instruction of improvement or accountability in what he did and how he did it. So it just added a whole new tier of wow, is doing all that. And then it's really giving the proof of what happened if someone accuses you of something. So that's really good. And then he just said that he is alarmed about the whole thing of cyber crimes. They have one detective that's simply doing that. That was never in my time zone as far as cyber crimes, domestic violence is way up. And then he said, the essential thing for all the schools is a school, school officer. I believe you have someone that helps out with your school. Hamilton has one. There's one other one, but they're trying to get an officer in all the schools. We know just the alarm that all of us had and what's, look, what's going on around the nation. We have to just go, we gotta, we gotta do this. We have to get it done somehow. I just mentioned that we get things done through legislators as far as meeting with them, making sure they know the money that's, that we need to see if there's money out there. And I think I mentioned that too before. So we have a lot of legislators. We met with eight of them probably two weeks ago and said, this is what we have. You know, we have broadband coming and we have that funding. We hope to find out, but we need some pressure just to try to get that. Ryan and I've talked about our water issue. So we've done aquacity of the whole county. Try to look at funding for that. We have test wells in now to show purity and depth to see if we're drawing too much at certain areas for subdivisions, just checking out what's there. And we're hoping to get money for that. And then there is even money for new construction as far as, so we have a $10 million courthouse that needs to be enlarged. And we believe there's money out there for even that, but we need their legislators to jump at it. And I think I mentioned to you that for the first time this past year, we hired our own lobbyist. And we believe it's good, it's, it's good bank for the buck. So we have lobbyists that simply are there to go to legislators that they know of and go, hey, did you know Alleghen's working on this? Can you help them with this issue? And we're finding that many of the issues that we didn't have a voice on, and we now have a voice to really jump on it and help us with it. I just wanted to mention to you one other thing. I chair Community Action. I just wanted to give you, so you're going, boy, Community Action, I know, I know it's really good. Let me just give you some stats for last year. 95,000 meals were delivered. 3,700 households received groceries. 1,000 monthly commodity boxes distributed to 207 seniors. Eighty-eight seniors received door-to-door transportation and 566 rides from volunteer drivers. 20,000 miles driven by volunteer drivers. 7,086 seniors received Project Fresh. Plus all sorts of schooling for children as far as education for adults raising families. They do a, they do a lot of good. So if you have someone who is indeed, send them to Community Action. They do a great job. And Scott, thanks for letting me speak.
Anytime, Dean. Thank you for coming. Any questions for Dean? Go ahead, Russ.
Yeah, welcome. Thanks for bringing here this evening. Sagatuck High School or Sagatuck High School, middle school does not have a full-time resource officer. Hamilton does. Sagatuck does not, at least as of March.
I just encourage you, the guy that they have is just a friend of mine who was getting later on in years. It's a perfect job for him. He was on the SWAT team. He's tremendous with kids. You talk to, I have, I have teachers that are friends of mine that go to have Joe nap in the school is just tremendous. He's an influence on kids. He's, he helps the low self-esteem child. He's there for safety, for just a safeguard of, hey, there's an officer here. And it's like their hero instead of someone who's the villain, it's someone who they really respect. So I'd really encourage you to ask the questions to Hamilton to see how all the things that it improved. And now I know that there's money coming down. I think there's two bills in the House for that, but just to be on top of it going, you know, with, with the officer that you partly support to say, how can we get an officer in here? And I know Frank's all about finding ways to do that. But I'd really encourage anything that you can do and I'll push it to that I just mentioned to you, and you asked me the question.
Yeah, I've asked, I've talked with the board member as well as the high school principal about this in the interest, and it came up at the police community meeting back in March. And a couple of people spoke up and said, or were aware of Hamilton having a resource officer. It asked if Sagatuck was looking at it. And if I remember correctly, Mark Nedlinger, the principal, said that that was being discussed. But at that point, they hadn't formally gotten there yet. So just, so the word's out there that it's.
I know there's, I think there's three schools that have it. Hamilton just said, we're going to bite the bullet and pay for it.
Yeah.
I think another school is doing a contract with us just for that officer. But I think there's various options for that school to do different things.
Well, I'll say our deputies are up there every single day and a lot of the students know them by a first-name basis. So they're, they're fantastic. They, they really get these students.
Thanks, Dean. I think that's a conversation we'd like to continue. But that, thanks for bringing that up, Russ.
You're welcome.
Okay, that takes us to public comment, item eight in our agenda. This is limited to agenda items only. If folks would be kind enough to limit your remarks to three minutes and as you approach the podium, please identify yourself by name and address for the clerk's benefit. Anyone in the audience that wishes to offer public comment? Seeing none, I will move to a fairly limited number of Zoom participants. I don't see any hands raised, Jamie. Okay, with that, then that's going to close our first public comment period of the evening. And that will take us to, to our consent agenda, item nine. This is a roll call, and we have the regular city council meeting minutes from May 8th, 2023, on page three of your packet.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Move to approve the regular city council meeting minutes, May 8th, 2023.
Second.
Motion Louis, second Baldwin. Any discussion on the eight minutes? No. With that, would the clerk please call the roll?
Stanton?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for that. Now we are at item 10 on our agenda. That starts on page seven. And we will start with a staff report. Ryan, over to you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. The staff report was reviewed at the Wednesday workshop. Page seven through 10, happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for the manager?
Thank you.
Looks like you're making good progress on the fourth.
Yes, and that's later. I'll give an update on the.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I wasn't here on Wednesday. So you got everything ready to go for that?
I mean, as ready as it can be at this moment. I'm working on it. So it is later on the agenda. You'll see that under new business, 16D, I'll give you a full update.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, good. I'm anxious to hear that.
Wonderful. Peter, anything on the treasury? Nothing? Okay. Planning and zoning, RC, anything? Thank you. Superintendent Herbert, anything on the DPW front you'd like to share? Thank you. I don't believe we have anyone from Alleghen County here, either online or in, in person. Okay, that takes us over to Mr. Moxie. John, I think you'd like to share on an exception basis?
Ask you any strange questions, but yeah.
Okay, very good. That was quick. We will go to boards, commissions, and committees. We have Mr. Fox here from the Fire District Administration Board. Dan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Dan Fox, Council Representative to the Sagatuck Township Fire District Board. I'll be brief or attempt to be brief. We had two meetings since we were all together, both on the same day, May 15th. Some of you were at the second one. The first one was a fairly abridged agenda, and I don't want to go through all of, all of it. One piece of it that may hold some interest for you relates to the, a fair amount of discussion still pending and discussing the notion of the fire district's costs related to short-term rental inspections, which the fire service has done for, forever, with the possibility of both bringing those costs, bringing the charge to the city, which is $175, into line with our costs, which are considerably higher than that. And even considering, I mean, lots of ideas were tossed out. The chief and his people believe that once every three years, which is how those are timed, is not sufficient, that it should be annually in the same way you test your, your smoke alarms and your CO alarms and whatever annually, particularly in a short-term rental where people are from out of town, don't know where these things are, perhaps in a house or whatever, that it would be smarter to do it that way. So that's a possibility. And then it was even brought up the possibility of working with the city, perhaps, it would be your call more than theirs, I guess, to see whether the city would be interested in adopting that function, safety inspection function, as a regular deal to take the fire district out of it. It consumes a lot of time. It might, in the fire district, be better devoted. Where an individual would have to be certified as an inspector and so forth, but it could be brought within, within the city. So anyway, that discussion went on, and as I say, nothing was finalized or voted on or whatever. Just bringing you up to speed. Then our second meeting, at which some of you attended, thank you, Mayor Dean. Ms. Baldwin, Mr. Gardner, Ms. Lewis, for being there at the fire district with the representatives of the two other jurisdictions, the township and, and Douglas City, to hear out the presentation on, on the budget, our district's budget, which you get to vote on tonight at 16B on your agenda. There were lots of good questions, lots of good involvement, lots of good discussion after the meeting about this, that, and whatever. But on balance, and our, our take was that it was a very useful and enjoyable and productive meeting. Any questions at all? I'm happy to try and answer.
I appreciate your comments on the short-term rental work the city's doing, and I don't want to put anybody on the spot. But do we have a mechanism with, with the work group to sort of hear some of the ideas from not only the fire department, but I'm also assuming the sheriff's department since enforcement and whose boundaries are, will be there. I don't know if, if you're prepared to discuss that at this point.
Yeah, it's something that could be added to a future agenda where we could talk about it.
As a, just as a resident citizen, I sent a list which included a number of those things.
Yeah, I, I really like your comments, and I just want to make sure that they are feeding into the short-term rental task force, the work group we've got. So because I think.
Yeah, that was the idea with, with, that's why I put them.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I just want to make sure.
At least they're there. I'm not saying everyone's a good idea, but.
No, sure. I think it's something we should explore. So I appreciate you flagging it for us. Yeah. Anything else for, for Dan? Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Great. That takes us to B2, the inter-urban board. Gregory, I think you'd like to share on your inter-urban?
Yeah, we just had our meeting on the 16th, and we'll want to report this April, we carried 680 more passengers than last year. That's a lot more people in one month. We've carried 120 more riders year-to-date than this period in 2019. We've been trying to get back to those numbers. That's pre-pandemic numbers. And I think we're getting close to getting that. We're expecting a busy season this year. The free parking shuttle will begin the first Saturday in July. We were awarded a grant again from the CBB. Thank you to them. And we're expecting, again, a busier season. Our afternoon ridership has been up so much that we've had our fourth bus on earlier than they should be, 45 minutes earlier, and keeping them until five. So. And then we should probably in the next week or two, I'm hoping, Phyllis will have that sheet done that Lawrence Stanton encouraged with a QR code, so folks can find their rides around town through the inter-urban. And I'll be helping to distribute those throughout town as soon as they're ready.
Thank you. It's great.
Great. Any questions for Gregory? Mark, you got you doing double duty today. We've got you here for a board and commission report for the Water Authority, and then we've also got new business item 16A. So you want to talk about general Cal Lake first, but then we'll save, we'll, we'll save the meat of the matter for 16A under new business?
Good evening, Council. Good to see y'all. I know that you hopefully received the packet from our last board meeting. And we'll answer any questions on that. Just two general comments. One is one of our most, Cal Lake's most visible service that goes, that you see over the years is the annual hydrant flushing, which is really somewhat inconvenienced a lot of people. It was held back in April. Cal Lake's responsible for maintaining almost 600 fire hydrants in the three communities. The hydrant flushing is a requirement by our friends in Lansing. One, it helps maintain a high water quality. It does flush the pipes and it maintains our firefighting capabilities through the primary reason of fire hydrants. This year, again, I think it's 586 hydrants, but with development, it always seemed to be adding a few more. And this year, we were told that the hydrant activity resulted in about 2.5 million gallons of water was flushed basically through the system. Residual benefit is all fire hydrants are then inspected for their mechanical workability. And I think there were eight hydrants that needed repairs. So at the end of this process, all the fire hydrants should be operational. That's followed by police and Van Debrin coming in and doing a fire hydrant flow test, which is something the fire district is very familiar with. The flow test demonstrates the amount of firefighting capacity of the water working through our system. And it's a key component in setting fire insurance classifications, which impact everybody's fire rates. Again, probably take the Sagatuck Township area as some of the lowest fire hydrant, fire rates in Alleghen County due to our hydrant system and, and the work of our fire district. So that's a critical event that is pretty visible. And oftentimes we get calls that there's just a hydrant running and running and running and running, and it's not being maintained. Well, it has been, or watched. Well, it is being washed and maintained. But there are key areas in the system that needs to flow continually in general areas where hydrants are being cleaned. And oftentimes, some of these are at dead ends where there's just a dead-end main and a fire hydrant at the end. But there's nothing to worry about. And I don't, we get, I guess Cal Lake says they get six or eight calls about an abandoned hydrant, just flushing water. But there's a purpose to that. One other thing, we did have a true payment of almost $39,000. Just an update, that's an ongoing expense for a update, replacement, and replacements of our generator systems that are, that are wastewater lift stations in the area, also converting several of them from oil to natural gas. That's about a three-year project at about a quarter of a million dollars. We've already purchased two portable generators and supplemented with purchase of some new and replacement generators along with it. Those are kind of the highlights of our last meeting. If you have any questions.
Any questions for Mark on Cal Lake?
Great to see you. Well, it's good to be seen.
We'll see, we'll see you back up here shortly for 16.
As I, on the agenda for that, I didn't have plans, or were you just kind of?
Can you be available for, for that? It's a pretty meaty infrastructure discussion, and I think we might value, I think it's, we'll get to it pretty quick. I wouldn't, if you don't mind.
No, no.
Okay, okay, thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to before Calisou Lake Harbor Authority.
Harbor Authority did not meet this, so next month it is.
Do we still have a harbor?
We still have a harbor.
Okay.
Still votes in it, just no meeting.
Okay, all right, fair enough. That takes us to ZBA, Zoning and Water of Appeals. Do we have a rep now? Nobody from ZBA here. Okay. Historic District Commission.
Yep. Next meeting is June the first, and items discussed at the May meeting are in RC's report as well as an item for the June. So.
Okay, great. That takes us to the second page of our agenda, Planning Commission.
Yeah, good evening. We met last Thursday, the 18th. We had a, we had a full meeting. The two first items that we discussed were two accessory dwelling units, or also known as ADUs. One was for 245 Spear Street, which in full disclosure happens to be my house. And then we had a second application at 703 Pleasant. And both were discussed and approved at the meeting. The other, the other item of action that we took was to move to, this is from the attorney's review, to recommend adoption of an amendment. So the zoning ordinance establishing a temporary waterfront commercial development and construction moratorium, which did pass unanimously, unanimously by the planning commission. So that was more of just kind of tying up things legally. Chris Patterson, Faye, attorney, was at the meeting. So that was accomplished. And then we began discussion regarding some of the planning for the waterfront development zoning ordinance review. And unfortunately, David Jurassic was not able to be there. He had a last-minute thing that he had come up and couldn't join us. But we began talking about how we're going to engage the community to actually get some feedback on what people feel about the waterfront. And there's a survey that David prepared for us. We have to return to Ryan Cummings by June 1st to kind of start getting people's feedback in terms of what the waterfront means to them and how it should be managed by the community and so forth. So we'll be getting busy here over the next couple of months on that. So excited about it.
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Eight, Parks and Public Works Committee, Helen.
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have Holly here for the Tri-Community Non-Motorized Trail State Committee. Garnet, you're also serving on that now. Anything to share?
Nope, just the manager's report covers it.
Okay. And 10, Tri-Community Recycling Ad Hoc.
Yep, nothing new, just waiting to hear on that Eagle electronics grant.
Sweet. Okay, great. Thanks. We have no requests for payments, item 11. That takes us to item 12, Approval of Accounts Payable. This is a roll call item. It is accounts payable in the amount of $99,749.46. It's on page 25.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable as presented at the amount of $99,746.50.
Second.
Motion Gardner, second Stanton. Any discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk, clerk, please call the roll?
Gardner?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Thank you. We have no introduction of ordinances. We have no public hearings tonight. We have no unfinished business tonight. That takes us to new business number 16 on our agenda. And the first one is Resolution 230522-A, Water System Improvements. It's on page 27 of your packet. And we are looking for a roll call on this tonight. Ryan, do you want to kick it off?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. You did discuss it, discuss this at your Wednesday workshop. You do have a sample motion, which would be my recommendation to approve the drinking water state revolving fund project plan as presented. I'm not fully aware that you all realize the numbers that were involved with this loan and/or the amount of assets that you maintain. We do have the pleasure of having Mr. John Moxie here to help us go through those numbers. Wonderful.
Yeah, we do have a presentation for you tonight. It's about 15 slides. We're going to try to be efficient, given that you have a full agenda and it's a beautiful night out. So I'm going to be brief. I'm going to introduce our, our team here behind me. Elaine Venema is our project manager for this. She's one of our grant experts, especially with the state revolving fund program. And Peter Trogash behind me is one of our water system experts that did a lot of the heavy lifting. So they are going to do most of this presentation. I just wanted to kind of set the stage and put things in perspective. We've been talking about this opportunity for about six months now, is when we kind of started down this road. We did an intent to apply back in November, just telling the state, hey, we know this application's coming up. Put us on the list. We're going to submit an application. So this, this is kind of the culmination of that process. This is the application that we're going to be presenting tonight. The, the format, the content is all heavily determined by Eagle. We just go through step by step. We have our last slide is, is for public comments and questions, but if any of you folks have questions along the way, feel free to jump in. We want to get the, those answered when you have them. The, as Ryan mentioned, the, the price tag is pretty staggering. It was for me at least. But this is, this is kind of the first official planning document that the city has for its water system. We've, we've had various asset management plans and capital improvement plans and everything in terms of the Cal Lake system. This is the first time we've really drilled down into city-specific needs and kind of compiled them in one place. So when we do that, the, the numbers are big, but they're, they're real. They're real needs. They're high priority needs. So this is the first of several opportunities to try and address those, whether we do it all at once or whether we now have a plan and we can pick away at those. So Jamie, why don't we go to the next slide is going to be our agenda for tonight. We'll go through the purpose, the background, the need analysis. We look at very specific alternatives when we're doing a state revolving fund project. We'll go through those and why they're included. There's an environmental review, a very early environmental review component that goes in here. Obviously, the biggest impact, what, what concerns most folks on projects like this are, are the end-user costs. We'll, we'll provide a range basically on, on what user costs could be, depending on whether we get anything from, from no grant assistance, assistance from Eagle, just a subsidized loan to a pretty sizable one. Based on our income levels here, we know we're going to be kind of at that lower end of the range in terms of grant potential. But it's such a unique time in, in the state's budgeting process and all these different things coming together that we felt like we had to at least put an application in and see where we stand. So background, the, a big part of this project is just addressing that, that looming 2041 deadline that seems a long ways away, but it's going to be here before we know it, to replace all of our lead and galvanized services that could have been connected to lead at some point. It's, it's a sizable task, anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000 per service. We've got about 500 and change services that we think fall into this category in the city. So do the math. That's, that's over a $5 million, you know, investment in the next, you know, 15 years or so. Aging infrastructure, Sagatuck has, has one of the older water systems in West Michigan. You have, I, I think Butler checks in in the early 19. Uh, you have, I, I think Butler checks in, in the early nineteen hundreds. Um, it's, it's just a historic system and, and there are still parts of that system out there. Uh, and then undersized mains, uh, you heard the report uh, from both uh, uh, Fire Department and uh, Cal Lake that um, firefighting is obviously one of the primary functions of this system. So having small, undersized mains that no longer meet today's uh, needs uh, is something to, to address. I'm going to turn it over now, Peter. Going to take us through some of the meter report.
Thank you, John. Uh, so just to give some background, uh, the Kalamazoo Lake Sewer and Water Authority, um, you know, they operate the, and maintain the water system that serves the city of Sagittuck as well as Douglas and Sagittuck Township. Um, so the, the entire regional system serves about twenty-seven hundred customers and nine hundred and seven of those are in Sagittuck. And so Sagittuck has approximately eight hundred and sixty-five permanent residents as of the twenty twenty census. Obviously, you know that, that uh, population approximately doubles during the summer season with uh, tourists and can even, you know, increase even more during summer weekends. And so just a, a lightly conservative projection of the population is around nine hundred and sixteen people by twenty forty-three. So the primary need for the project.
Yes, a quick question back to the numbers. Um, there's a forty-two difference between the census, say sixty-five, and the total customers. Are those businesses or are they double? What's, what's the?
Yeah, a lot of those are businesses and then, you know, just a lot of the seasonal residents that weren't included.
Okay, thank you.
So the primary, I guess, objective of this project plan is addressing water quality, um, mainly in the form of lead service lines, which are known to contaminate the water system if it's not properly operated or maintained, as you might have heard about the Flint water crisis. And so lead contamination can cause pretty serious health issues. Um, the lead contamination is not currently an issue in Sagittuck's water system, but since there are lead service lines, the potential risk exists. Um, so as John mentioned, you know, we need to replace all the lead service lines by twenty forty-one to comply with the Michigan lead and copper rule. Another big thing is the aging infrastructure, the, the old water mains that are uh, still being used in the system. Um, most of those are cast iron pipes that are beyond their useful life. And so they're becoming brittle and fragile and more prone to water main breaks. And so, and you know, water main breaks are costly to fix and they interrupt service to customers and potentially cause contamination of the system. And another thing with the uh, aging infrastructure is that the water mains are just undersized and they don't provide the necessary firefighting capacity that they should. Another thing in the project report is to address the wellhouse number five. Um, it's not currently in great condition. It's such a sheet metal building and it does not fully protect or secure well number five from tampering or any, any other we- weather-related incidents. And so, you know, we're requesting or proposing a, a new building for wellhouse number five. And the last thing is the reservoir overflow. So as you know, the water storage tank sits on top of Mount Baldhead and the KLSWA is required to overflow that tank once per year. And so the, the pipe where the overflow water comes uh, out of the ground is the water is rerouting a channel down the side of the dune. And so this project, you know, proposes to somehow fix that channel erosion and stabilize the soil and potentially restore the topography of the dune. Pass it off to Elaine.
All right, so um, main objectives for the SRF project are, you know, the main goal is to continue to have the city provide safe and reliable uh, drinking water and firefighting capacity for your city residents. Um, and to do that, it's going to require replacing some high priority infrastructure, some of the old critical stuff, the, the lead service lines, the undersized water main. Another major um, objective is to comply with the uh, Michigan lead and copper rule and also with the state's Safe Drinking Water Act three ninety-nine, all while minimizing costs to the, the citizens and the users of the system. And also to minimize any kind of en- environmental impacts. So as required by the state, we usually look at a couple of different alternatives. Um, the first one's no action. We'll go through each of these here in, in a couple of slides. The second one is optimizing performance of the existing system through operational changes only. Um, the third one is kind of a regionalization, which the state requires us to look at. And then um, the last alternative is going to be the water system improvements. So the no action alternative is basically there's not a construction project. The state requires you to look at this. Um, it doesn't really meet those project objectives. Um, certainly isn't going to allow the city to comply with the lead and copper rule. Um, starting in twenty twenty-five through twenty forty-one, all of the lead service lines and all of the galvanized lines that were connected or are connected to a lead gooseneck will need to be um, replaced. So now is a good time to kind of look at doing that as a big project and potentially getting some subsidized funding for that. Um, so basically, the, the no action alternative doesn't really meet the project objectives. The second one is optimization of the system without a big capital project. Um, because of the nature of the improvements needed here, um, there's not really anything you can do to optimize it. Uh, you know, if it was like a treatment project for your drinking water system, maybe there were some operational changes that could be done. But as far as the pipes in the ground, uh, there's not really anything we can really do operationally. Um, Cal Lake and the DPW already do a great, great job operationally. So that one doesn't really meet project objectives either. Um, the other option that the state requires you to look at is um, regionalization of the system. Well, the city's already part of a regional system. So we're just looking at the city-owned um, distribution system really as part of this project. So uh, again, regionalization's more of something that you'd look at if you were looking at treatment alternatives for a system that wasn't already part of a regional system. So that kind of leads us to the Water System Improvements Alternative D in the report, which is going to include citywide replacement of all the lead service lines and any galvanized lines that are, were connected to lead gooseneck. And that's going to um, comply with the state's lead and copper rule, which is one of the more stringent ones in the um, in the country, but many other states and federally are looking at the Michigan rule as a model. So it will likely be implemented elsewhere. Um, the other uh, part of the project is going to be replacing and upsizing various sections of water main. Um, those older sections of the cast iron pipe that are four and six inch are going to get upsized to eight inch. Um, and that's just going to help with reliability of the system. It's going to meet the current standards. You're no longer actually allowed to put in anything less than an eight inch anymore. Um, so it's going to help with the, the water reliability and quality there. And then looking to replace that building out at wellhouse number five, um, replace it with something that's a little more secure, a little more resistant to vandalism and whatnot. And then also, like Peter mentioned, we want to look at um, protecting that dune from erosion with the reservoir overflow. So I'm going to let Peter talk a little bit more in detail on each one of these items. And um, then I'll talk about the user impacts at the end.
All right, so Alternative D was the only alternative that met the project objectives. So that's the one we are proposing in the report. Um, and this would include replacement of approximately five hundred and thirty-eight lead service lines, which is over half of the service lines in the city. Um, it'd also include replacing about two point seven miles of water main on those streets listed there on Maple Street, Elizabeth Street, Lucy Street, Hoffman Street, Butler Street, which is a very important one. Uh, Grand Street in two different locations, Park Street and the Wellfield Loop, which is in front of Wells Four and Five. And then another major one is the River Crossing. Additionally, the Wellhouse Five site improvements, as, as we've met, we've mentioned, uh, would include a new Wellhouse Building, probably made of brick, a little more sturdy than sheet metal, and also some electrical service improvements. Um, I believe some of the electrical wires have risen towards the ground surface and are not up to code for very underground. Um, so then also modifying the reservoir overflow. Um, we don't know how that would look at this stage. That would be determined during the design phase of the project, but it could include extending the overflow pipe into an infiltration basin, could include, you know, putting down riprap in that channel, uh, putting a diffuser at the end of the pipe. And then if feasible, uh, it'd be ideal to restore the natural topography of that dune uh, to prevent the dune erosion. So on all the total project costs would be sixteen point five million dollars. And here's a map of the uh, streets that are proposed for water main improvements. Um, and then, you know, also the storage tank up in the northwest there and Wellhouse Five towards the east. And back to Elaine.
So as part of this, we also look at any sort of um, preliminary environmental impacts that might uh, occur as part of the construction or operation of the project. Um, basically, we're looking at just replacing infrastructure that's already in the ground or already at a site that, like the wellhouse or the tank. So we're not really anticipating any long-term environmental impacts due to this project. Um, there will be some short-term temporary construction impacts that you have with any uh, capital project, including dust and noise from um, construction equipment. And there'll, there'll be some traffic detours um, that we'll have to work with the city on making sure that uh, people can access the homes and businesses, but um, you know, we can always mitigate those as we do for all of our projects. And then there's going to be some beneficial impacts uh, as part of this project. Mostly um, removing the sources of lead in the drinking water is going to be a huge uh, benefit, benefit to your um, your citizens, your residents here. And then another benefit is going to be trying to address that erosion um, from the overflow pipe in the dunes. So I know I live up in Zealand and I come down to the Sagittuck dunes all the time. In fact, my kids were at Mount Baldhead for a class trip a couple of weeks ago. So we appreciate the dunes in the area for sure. So going back to the uh, user costs, and this is probably the most interesting for the public in attendance and for yourself, but um, I think John mentioned this, but it's a really great time to be trying to go after the SRF funding um, for water infrastructure in particular. The state um, SRF program has a lot more money to allocate this year than they've ever had before. Um, part of the state's unused ARPA money was dedicated um, with Public Act fifty-three for the state revolving fund. And also the um, federal bipartisan infrastructure act um, also funneled a lot of money to individual states for their SRF programs. Um, including a dedicated amount for lead service line replacement in particular. So one thing to note is um, it is a scored, it is a competitive um, financing program. Usually in the past, it's only been loaned, but like I mentioned, some extenuating circumstances allow there to be potential for principal forgiveness or, or a grant um, for certain components. Um, the state is looking to allocate higher grant amounts to overburdened communities. And because of the median household income here in the city, you don't qualify as overburdened. However, they do have a separate pot of money, separate from the overburdened grant just for lead service line replacement. So we're hoping that um, you might get some of that. Um, the other thing is the SRF even as a loan is still a good subsidized um, program. As you know, interest rates lately have been going up, up, up. And um, the low interest loan last year, they haven't announced it yet for this fiscal year, but last year um, it was one point eight seven five percent for the twenty-year loan and two point one two five percent for the thirty-year loan. So way better than you could go out and get on a revenue bond at the bank. So even if, if you weren't able to get a uh, big grant amount, it would still be a good fine, fi- uh, funding package. One thing to note is the state does score all of these. So these are due, the final application is due to the state on June first. And then the state, they're probably going to get three hundred of these, I would guess, that they're going to have to review and score. Um, things that will get you points are lead service line replacement and some other, some other things that are included. So we won't know until probably the end of August is when the state usually publishes their draft project priority list, that list out in order, um, scored order, where they think the funding's going to get down to and how much grants um, each community might get. So we'll be looking at that when that comes out in um, late August or early September. And then the state has a thirty-day public notice period on that, and then they finalize it before the state um, budget gets finalized on October first. So um, just to note on that, um, if you could go back up one slide, sorry. Um, once the project priority list is out, the draft is out, that's when the city can kind of decide, hey, we didn't get as much grant money as we'd really like. So maybe instead of doing this all as one big project, we'll just do the lead service line part, or maybe we'll just work on it, work on a plan and do it over time instead of taking the financing um, package. So I just want you to know that the resolution in front of you tonight doesn't commit you to necessarily taking the SRF money. It just gets you into the application. So you can see where you're going to fall with the scoring and how much grant the, the state's going to offer. Um, so that's kind of why I wanted to look at this table here. It's a kind of scary number. If you don't get a grant, um, that sixteen and a half million dollar, if it was all loan, um, would increase the monthly meter equivalent base fee by forty-four dollars and fifteen cents. Um, if there's, if there's a twenty-five percent grant or principal forgiveness amount, that goes down um, proportionally to thirty-three dollars and eleven cent increase. Um, similarly, fifty percent grant, that would be a twenty-two dollar and seven cent increase monthly. Seventy-five percent grant, that would be a, an eleven dollar um, monthly uh, increase for your normal residential uh, customer. So that's why I wanted to let you know that just, just because you approved that resolution to submit the application is not going to tie your hands into having to do the project. So you'll, you'll be able to see what the funding package looks like before you decide to move forward. So um, next slide, please. The, the schedule is pretty quick for SRF projects, um, mostly because the state doesn't finalize their um, project plan list until October. So that gets us into uh, design pretty quick after that, looking at design in January through March, and then bidding would be next May, right around this time next year, with a loan closing um, next August, if you choose to go forward with the loan um, funding. And then construction would start as early as next fall. Um, and we're anticipating about a year, maybe a little longer, depending on how contractors' schedules go. So um, at this point, I'll take any questions from the council and then we'll take questions from the public as well after that.
I mean, thank, thank you for coming, thank for sending. Um, I talked to the mayor and city manager. And I mean, I, I think it's really important that the public understands, like, to my mind, this is the most important thing that we've got going on right now. We've got about a four million dollar budget every year, whole general fund budget. It was sixteen million dollar project that we are legally on the hook for. Um, got to talk about how we're going to fund that forty-four dollars a month if we get no grants, which I know that we are not a, you know, a, a community that um, uh, uh, has, has a lot of financial troubles. So um, the numbers are eye-popping that, that we, we need to, it would, it's nice to say we should have gotten out ahead of this. We have, we have a sixteen million dollar plan on here. If you look at our balance sheet, we've got four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars reserved for sewer replacements. Um, we talk about a lot of things at our meetings. We talk about, you know, what we're going to do for this, what we're going to do for that. This is the thing that we, I think, have, is, it's been slept on and we need to address it. And um, it's, it's probably going to be painful and it's not going to be popular. Um, but it's our drinking water and uh, we have to get after it.
Thank you, Helen. Uh, any other council comment?
Yeah.
Well, I think Garnet wants to start, but then, oh, go ahead, you go.
Go ahead. It's all good. I'm fine.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, great presentation. Uh, appreciate the information. It's uh, it's digestible for, for everybody and uh, it's, it is um, um, it is sobering to understand exactly what we face as a community. The thing I would say is always that Sagittuck's not alone in this. Every community- Every community is dealing with a similar issue. So there's going to be a lot, as you mentioned, there's going to be a lot of competitiveness around funding for this. And um, you know, Sagatuck is fortunately be in a good financial position, but certainly nothing that would even come close to funding this fully. So the grant funding and so forth is incredibly important for us as a community. Um, and uh, you, you know, I would say with some experience in town, I don't think this has been slept on. I think we're just finally now understanding what the scope of the expectations are going to be. That's really what it's coming down to, is it's now clear exactly what needs to be done in the numbers. I have a lot of questions about the numbers, but that's not for tonight. Um, but I would suggest it as a council is that we make this a standing agenda item so we can have continuous discussion about how we approach this. Uh, Mr. Moxie is usually here at most of the meetings and, and I think it just to council member Baldwin's comment, this is number one priority. And it should be in front of us on a regular basis for just reflection and discussion. Make sure we are staying on top of this as appropriate because it, there, there, there is no way to get out of this. This has to be done. And it's probably going to reset some priorities from a financial standpoint for the city for the next few years at least. And some of it's unknown, as you said in your suggestion, uh, in your presentation. I just, I, I, I want to thank Fleece and Van den Brink for taking this so seriously with us. Um, I'm committed to making this work right for the city and for our finances and for our citizens. I mean, drinking water is obviously very incredibly important. And we've got a great Cal Lake Sewer and Water Authority who will be working with us on this as well. Um, so I think we're well positioned to deal with this, but we have to just confront it head on.
Any other comments, thoughts, questions from council?
Go ahead, Garnett. If I may, I mean, I, I appreciate the approach that you've taken. So the resolution isn't binding us, which is nice. Without it, we hamstring ourselves. So this is the, it makes the most sense to do this and then take it you know, stage by stage. Uh, I would hope, you know, I know we're a more affluent community. Um, it would be interesting, you know, that they'll have a lot of grants, like you've said, but with a critical dune, um, that alone, I think is important as far as that drain field. Um, but it's, it's really the only approach we can take, um, in my opinion, so.
Thanks, Garnett. Yeah, yeah. I agree with each and every one of you here and, and your observations. Um, in my day job, I've, I've seen this time and time again. Um, you know, drinking water is great. You don't see it, you don't see your pipes, you, the water just comes out of the tap and it's clean and it's healthy and you don't have to think about it until something goes wrong. And, and I've had the um, I, I've had to respond to a number of communities in the state where things have gone wrong. And I can tell you, once a community loses, once a community defers maintenance to the point that they have an issue and the drinking water is no longer safe to drink, uh, the community loses not only business and not only is it a huge economic hardship for the community and a huge hardship for people's property values, people lose trust in their water. And once people lose trust in their water, it's very hard to get that trust back. Uh, so yeah, these, uh, these numbers are eye-watering and I'm glad uh, that you've been very transparent and showing, you know, these are some big numbers that people even, even in the best case scenario, um, you know, rate pairs should be prepared for a bigger bill from Cal Lake in the future. I think that's probably inevitable. Um, but we cannot defer maintenance any longer. And the silver lining here is that there is once in a generation, infrastructure funding available from the state that's been augmented with federal funds. So it would be irresponsible in my view for us not to move forward with this and put our hat in the ring for grant loan opportunities because there's going to be a lot of competition and we need to do this. And we cannot kick this can down the road. We cannot defer this maintenance. This is absolutely critical infrastructure work for our city. So with that, I'll call the question.
Yep, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the drinking water state revolving fund project plan as presented.
Second. Uh, motion Louis second, Gardner.
Mr. Mayor, sorry. Yeah, we need to make sure there's no questions from the public.
Oh, very good. Thank, thank you. Uh, I will open up the floor to anyone in the, in the audience that wishes to make public comment.
You gotta come up, Dan. We gotta, you gotta be able to hear you.
Curious why, Dan Fox, sorry, I'm curious why the, the uh, Cal Lake would be the agent collecting the money, not the city. It's a city-owned property, not Cal Lake-owned property.
You know, is a public comment, is a question and answer, is it?
It is.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I mean, I can say, it's the same reason that the township collected funds for, I think they started in two thousand eighteen um, to maintain the assets that they own. So it's a, it's a method that you can use, which again, the township's been utilizing. And maybe John Moxie can assist with that question as well.
Between the length of sending out a bills, the township just adds another line item onto the township residence bill. This would uh, foretend to be a function of saying.
So it's been used just in a neighboring, that method to collect funds to maintain an asset has been used in the township for five years.
It remains an asset of the city of Sagatuck after you spend a hundred million dollars, whatever it is, right? Regardless of who collected.
Correct, doesn't matter who collects it.
An asset at Cal Lake.
Cool, well, correct, as it stands, not an asset of Cal Lake.
As it stands.
It's just an instrument to collect funds to maintain infrastructure.
I wasn't trying to be confrontational.
No, no, it's not.
It's not top station, Chris.
Oh, thanks, this is all good. Public comments, it's great. And uh, thank you for the point of order, by the way. Um, I didn't realize you needed to do that. So any other comments or public comment, uh, go ahead, uh, Mark, please, go ahead.
Well, Peter might have had something to add to that.
Yeah, go ahead, Peter.
No, I know the township, basically they, it's on the monthly bill, everybody pays. And then quarterly, Cal Lake cuts the check back to the township and they hold the funds and their trust for sewers, just water. And it's been going on, I think it's, it's been five years and sooner the better, we better off.
Okay. Good.
Thank you.
Uh, go ahead, Mark, you had on to offer comment.
Can I make a couple of clarifications?
Sure.
Uh, the method of applying a charge to your water bill, uh, the precedent is based on the township. Township did that when they had uh, contamination issues and about the area uh, sixty-third street and Old Allegan Road. And they had to get water from across the expressway down one hundred and thirty-fourth avenue. That's North Street Extended East back out to fund some of those areas. Uh, they fought, they uh, financed that by a combination surcharge. Basically, it's a surcharge on the water bill. It's not an adjustment in the rate. Okay, you won't be able to adjust the rates, but what you do is what if the council wishes to utilize that, uh, you just, you just put a fee on, on the water bill and the Cal Lake would collect it and it would be a pass through. Okay, similar like we do with a lot of our taxes now, that we collect them and we pass them out to the school district, the fire district. So that would be kind of a similar, similar approach. So a couple of issues, and I get where you're coming with the SRF program. Uh, we were involved with one, we had a rather large one at Cal Lake about five years ago, six years ago. And we're in the process now of doing the same thing. And when you put the SRF program together, it's kind of a wish list. It's like, if we had unlimited funds, what could we accomplish? And it's not very often that you get the unlimited funds, then you have to start cutting back the project. A few things to keep in mind is things that I pointed out, uh, that, that caught me. Uh, Park Street Water Main is relatively new compared, and I believe it's a twelve-inch main that was put in oh, nineties, it was actually paid for with some of the development at the Hayworth property. And that water main runs all the way out to exit thirty-six. Um, just to comment, and you know, there's an area where maybe we don't have to replace that.
Hmm.
Like, I think that's part of the wish list approach, I believe. Um, Cal Lake is aware, and I believe we am funded to repair the damage up at the reservoir. We had problems with uh, getting the proper pipe because of the uh, you know, the issues with the uh, supply chain. Um, and so uh, I don't know where that's, where that's at, but I believe that that's on our agenda if it hasn't been already done, actually.
Yeah, that actually came straight from Daryl, um, so.
That, that this is something we should include here, okay? So maybe he wants to just pass that on and doesn't want that. And maybe they were doing, looking at more of a engineering professional approach as opposed to the Cal Lake crew going out there and laying, laying the pipe and putting some stone in some, that's good. And that, that, that's, that's. All right, and I think it's important to, for the council and the community knowing that our main water system is in very good shape. Our big mains that, think of it as your spine, you know? And, and it is, it is very good shape. We wouldn't have the capacity, nor would we have the pressure we have uh, with our flow testing. You agree, you're, you're the engineer, not me. Uh, so, but what, what is, it's as you get out into certain areas, like I downtown area, it's terrible. Okay, we know that some of the time, we don't know where these water, water lines are. Water Street is excellent, all the way out to Lake Street. Okay, um, Park Street is, is a good main. I don't think the main on North or Maple Street is that old, I just think it's undersized. But that's argument of that stuff that'll have to be developed once you get the, the funding mechanism and everything. Uh, look at all my comments, I didn't mind to throw a blanket or anything, but those are just some things that I've been experienced with, you know, in involved with here in a Cal Lake. And still upsets me, it upset me a lot when I was there, ups me more when I'm here about unfunded mandates that come from the state of Michigan. Yeah, and sometimes wonder if you are doing your best to be proactive to do something like this and the state just wants to wash your hands of and say, okay, let them, we're sorry, they're taking care of themselves. I think, I think that's something you got to be careful about. Also a comment when we did the Campbell Street Road, that was also included all lead and cup, or lead services and galvanized services. Uh, cause that added what, Ryan? Couple hundred thousand dollars in project, bring Douglas and us, we did that project, so. It's something that obviously we have to face. It's just that you'd hope that the boys and the people in Lansing would step to the plate a little bit more and not just make a lot of false promises regarding this stuff. It's a lot of money to a lot of communities.
Hmm.
Anyways, yeah, good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you, Mark, thank you, Mark.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, yeah, any more public uh, comments in the room? Um, I don't see any one in the room.
Just as a comparison, as a question, the township, they've had a surcharge since twenty eighteen, Ryan, is that what you said?
Yeah, I believe that's when they instituted their, their surcharge.
And what about, how much was that per residence?
I don't know the answer to that.
Curious.
I also know that the city village of Douglas has not done instituted a surcharge, and so they're in a very similar position of uh, owning a lot of assets. And we're talking everything from the water reservoir, which we share fifty-fifty with City Village of Douglas to the main lines. Um, they have not put money aside to maintain these assets that we should have known that we've owned for a long time. Um, so they're going to also be likely instituting something very similar as far as a surcharge.
Great. Um, I'll open it up to the Zoom, but I don't think we've got any hands raised on the Zoom. Um, have we met your public comment?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
You can, you can do your resolution motion now, thank you.
I think we, we.
We have a motion.
Should we, should we do a redo on that then? Do we need to, we don't, we don't need a redo, so we've got a motion to approve? Okay, so we just need roll call then, all right.
Gardner?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes. Great, motion passes. Uh, we are now at sixteen B, the fire budget. This will be a roll call, it's on page one oh five of your packet. Um, I will just kind of kick things off. Um, several of us went to a very informative um, public meeting hosted by the fire board with our, our neighboring communities. It was very helpful for me in my understanding. We also uh, discussed it at some length at our workshop. Um, but it's on page one oh five, uh, we have a memo here uh, from, from you, Ryan. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Garnett.
Motion to approve the budget as presented for the Sagatuck Township Fire Budget.
Second.
Motion Louis second, Baldwin, uh, any further discussion? Once again, this was discussed at some length uh, among us at the workshop.
Just for the public, the um, with the raising of the, the millage from two point two to two point five mills, just for the general knowledge about how much is that for a one hundred thousand dollar home, that's how they usually discuss that if um, if Dan wants to come up.
Yeah. Peter, Peter may have it, Peter may have it too.
Peter.
Yeah. Yes. I forgot.
I think it's sixty bucks for a hundred thousand dollar home.
Yeah.
I think maybe, maybe it was in that slideshow.
I think it was in the slideshow.
Average home in Sagatuck, we would see an increase of about
Sixty bucks, with the average
For one hundred thousand.
Seventy-five hours, they had, they had the chart there.
Yeah.
Of that, about seventy-five dollars a year. And out of that increase, about seventy-five percent of the actual dollars are going for the hiring of the three new full-time career firefighters slash EMTs.
So most homeowners in Sagatuck will see about a seventy-five dollar increase a year.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that, Lauren. Any other comments or questions from the council?
Yeah, Merdine, uh, thank you. So probably my, well, my personal biggest takeaway from the presentation last Monday is that um, like mentioned, we're very lucky to have what we have and um, I, I'm just very grateful for their services that they provide. The other interesting thing, and a lot of communities are facing this, is the transition that's taking place in terms of this service. Um, structured fires are still a risk. As a matter of fact, there was a response yesterday to a grass fire out, if you heard all the fire trucks, that there could have been a structure fire, there's one reported, but it really wasn't. But the fact of the matter is, is that they have to be able to respond to those as well as what's really more of the issue now are medical calls. And um, you, you know, I, I really appreciate the board's efforts as well as the chief's efforts to try to manage that transition because it's clearly in a state of transition. Staffing, how you need to provide the service to the community. And, and, and my impression was is that the board and the leadership at the uh, fire district are, are well-positioned and are thinking about this future state, which is some in ways can't tell what it's going to be. And this budget reflects that ability to be able to try to respond to what's taking place. But um, you know, we should be very grateful and I think um, I have a lot of respect for the work that they do, so.
Thank you. Uh, any other council comments, questions?
No, if I may, I just, um, we had a great discussion about this on Wednesday and the, the workshop, the special workshop was very welcomed and I think everyone who presented really appreciated it. Um, and I really appreciated the collegiality in the room, which was very nice. And I hope we can continue that and do that every year because I thought it was a very effective way to present the budget, yeah.
I saw the chair, I saw the chair of the board just casually on Sunday, just walking through town and I, I, I expressed the same sentiment to her. Um, so with that, I, I think we can call the question. Um, would the clerk please call the roll?
Louis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Great, uh, that passes. We are at sixteen C, more infrastructure, road maintenance approval. This will be a road call, I kind of, and it's on one twenty of our packets.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Ryan.
Thank you. So I'm going to call on the assistance of uh, Mr. John Moxie and uh, Scott Herbert, if he'd like. And if any, anyone's wondering who the handsome man sitting next to him, that's Mr. Mike Herbert. Longtime public servant. You're welcome. So I, I do have a cover page, but I'm starting to question if these numbers are correct. So if you could just kind of lead us through the, the three separate items and guide us through, through this quickly.
Yeah, um, three items, uh, we had a pretty lengthy discussion, good discussion on Wednesday, so we'll, we'll be extra brief. But um, the, the two of these um, are, are larger maintenance items more than what uh, Scott, just making a few phone calls really was appropriate for. Uh, one of them is of that variety. The one that is of that variety is the spillway work, just doing some new asphalt spillways at Oval Beach and, and on Mason Street. Uh, the other two, uh, one is for uh, basically citywide pavement markings, every pavement marking in the city uh, to the tune of about thirty thousand dollars for that. The other one is some pretty uh, aggressive uh, patching, um, mill and fill work. Um, again, kind of in those highest priority areas throughout the city um, to the tune of about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Um, I do have letters in your packet, kind of a formal uh, recommendation of award for the two that we did a, a formalized public bidding process. Those would turn into actual construction contracts. Uh, the, the third one uh, there with Russ's black top is, is really just uh, approving their quote to, to do the work.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Gregory.
To approve the bid, to uh, to approve the bid, to approve the bid award as recommended by engineer for a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars with A1
with A one asphalt for asphalt repairs, thirteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars for spillway and drainage work with Bruce's black top and thirty-seven thousand dollars for pavement markings with Ace Parking.
Second.
I'll give that to motion.
So a hundred and thirty-eight. I think that was the typo.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's the fact check. So
I'm sorry about that.
No, that's not my fault. Gregory, I hate to ask, but would you restate the motion?
I will. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid award as recommended by engineer for a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We're making gonna make you work for this motion, Gregory.
I'm sorry.
No.
All good. Motion to approve the bid award as recommended by engineer for a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars with A one asphalt for asphalt repairs, thirteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars for spillway and drainage work with Bruce's black top and thirty-seven thousand dollars for pavement markings with Ace Parking.
Second.
All right. Motion Muncy, second Stanton. Any further council discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Russ.
Mr. Mayor, just uh, so with the previous discussion with the safe water and replacement of mains and pipes begs the question of some of the improvements, and I don't think these would necessarily impact that. But going forward, something I think that I'll be thinking about is, okay, do we do a project on a road and then come back and have to tear the road up to do lead and lead and copper pipe work? So I I I know that's on your mind too, John.
Yeah.
Um, so just kind of if you can expand on that, so make sure that that public understands we're not going to be spending money to go back and tear up a road again.
Yeah, yeah, two two thoughts and it's it's a great, great question because it's it's definitely something we look at. If you take that map from our previous presentation and overlay it with the map of roads that we're working on, they are different segments of road. They are specifically different segments of road because we don't want to do that. The other part of that is we are, we are not going in and doing a full twenty-year fix on these roads. We're doing a kind of a five-year fix just to try and get us along. Um, save Scott some some tons of of hot mix, uh, because you know, it's it's getting to the point where it's just eating that up. Um, and and just trying to focus on those highest priority areas, just the top layer of asphalt, not even going full depth in all these areas, just to, yeah, make it a little more maintainable.
For sure. John stopped me a couple of times when I pointed out some rough areas of road that had um, bad bad water pipes underneath. So it makes sense. The the work that we're doing uh, for the most part, it's a semi-permanent fix uh, with with uh, decent water infrastructure underneath.
Looking looking ahead uh, four or five months, when we hear back on our Eagle application, if if we decide not to move forward with a full-blown project, that would be the point where we're going to take those maps and then overlay them and see where our water infrastructure needs. Where do they intersect with our road system needs? And we're going to hit play and just start breaking off those pieces.
Great. Thank you. Anything else from uh, any other questions from the council? Very good. With that, we've we've got a motion on the floor. Uh, let's call the question. It's a roll call vote with the clerk. Please call the roll.
Muncy?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, that takes us to item sixteen D, uh, Fourth of July celebration update from the city manager.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Ryan.
Okay, thank you. Um, for the benefit of the council and the audience, especially Mr. Muncy, who did not hear anything about the fireworks and laser show. We're going to do a hybrid show. Um, as the city tries to transition um, away from fireworks, at least some organizations. Um, so the city was comfortable when I presented the idea. First of all, I was tasked with putting on the fireworks and laser show. There's no other event coordinator and I'm sorry, I just keep looking at you, but you weren't here for the last meeting. Um, and so I've been I've been tasked. So here's the good news. I did confirm that we got Night Magic, the fireworks company that we've used in previous years. They still stand around fifteen thousand. Uh, the laser show, I did get a proposal from them, a firm proposal. Um, they were at twenty thousand last time I presented to you all. I did get them down to a low, low price of eighteen thousand as of now. Um, the barges, so we would need four, two for fireworks, two for lasers. Um, or lasers, as the mayor would like to say. Um, so there are the two thousand per barge. Hope to talk to the King family about that possibly tomorrow. Um, we have music from a Mr. DJ House Shoes. Uh, he's at five thousand. Um, and that's that's still a solid number. Um, the lighting, which I think was the most the stage lighting for the music um, and the sound system. I think that was the biggest sticker shot shock from last week. I presented a number at twenty thousand. I'm down to ten thousand. Thanks to the help of Ms. Baldwin. Um, and then Oxbow's still trying to work with uh, Oxbow School of Art to help design, create and create a poster uh, for the event. And so the artist fee would be at around a thousand dollars. Um, the other thing that came with that, Mr. Muncy, is that uh, they could sell the posters and the city would be comfortable with that. I mean, we weren't looking, we're just looking for something to advertise it. So if they wanted to sell the posters, they could uh, keep their keep their profits. So combined laser fireworks show with a DJ. Um, the numbers of which I just went over, the city committed themselves to ten thousand. Uh, City Village of Douglas, um, the ask is four thousand. They're going to proceed with that ask. I feel pretty confident about that. Uh, the township, uh, the ask is going to be four thousand for them as well. Uh, good news. I did present to the CVB uh, for an ask of ten thousand dollars. Um, and they awarded the ten thousand dollars. Very nice. Um, I still have an ask out to Sedaba for two thousand dollars. Um, we'll see what comes of that. And the rest would come through sponsors and donations to uh, make the windfall for the the delta for the for the event. So good news, the uh, on the expenditure side, numbers went down.
Any questions for the manager? Doing great. Keep at it.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Brian. And if anybody wants to make donations, they would email you directly.
Yes, please.
Wonderful.
And we have received some private donations.
Excellent. Thank you for that.
And yeah, um, is the CVB going to help get the word out that uh, we're getting donations or can you work with? I'm sure Lisa would do like a nice uh, e-blast or something like that.
Did not request an in-kind sponsorship, but I'm sure they would be happy to do so. Yeah.
Yeah.
This is what they do.
And yeah, you you have a vehicle that you can get the word out to. Yeah, excellent. Thank you. Good. Um, wonderful. Thank you. Keep keep up the good work on that, Ryan. Appreciate it. Um, that takes us to sixteen E FEMA Flood Plane Ordinance Update. This will be a roll call. A vote is on page one twenty-eight. I've been getting these interesting letters from Homeland Security on this, so. Ryan comments, you've had an easy night so far. Make 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 the feds go away.
Uh, yeah, well, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Yeah, we don't want uh, the feds after us by any means. So uh, FEMA has updated our flood insurance uh, study uh, and flood insurance rate maps. Um, so it's good news. We're going to have much better digital copies, much more. Uh, they're going to be easier to read, um, available in a a digital format online for folks as well. Um, but along with that, we're required to uh, update uh, our ordinances to make sure that they they comply with the regulations that meet um, federal law. So uh, Eagles provided us with the uh, a sample uh, ordinance. Um, we've worked with our uh, city attorneys to um, present you with um, some changes to our current ordinances that will essentially update our um, dates on the the maps that are referenced. Uh, and then the other big change is designating the um, building official as the uh, floodplain administrator, and that's a recommendation coming from FEMA and uh, Eagle themselves because a lot of the regulations relate to the state construction code. But as far as processes go, I'm still going to be reviewing and flagging issues and 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 working with applicants along with uh, Michigan Township Services to make sure that we're addressing any floodplain issues. So uh, one item of note, uh, we don't have like a clean copy in your your packet, but as for your your knowledge, the items that have, you know, that are struck through will be, you know, removed from your current ordinance and then the the items that are are underlined would be the items that are are added in, just so we have that real clear for you.
Okay, yeah, I see it. Okay, uh, we we've got a sample motion here. Go ahead, Garn.
Motion to approve ordinance two three zero five two two dash A flood pain floodplain management provisions of the State of Construction Code.
Second.
Motion Lewis, second Baldwin. Uh, any further council discussion on this? Hearing none. Uh, would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Very nice.
Yes. Great, thank you. Um, passes. Uh, we are now at uh, item F, revocable license. This is for Grow. This will be a voice vote. It's on page one thirty-seven of our packets. Uh, RC, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. And uh, yeah, so this is a uh, a sidewalk seating uh, request from uh, Grow Cafe and Bistro. So this would be grant them uh, permission to uh, from the city to use the uh, sidewalk uh, until November and then um, we'll work on other uh, necessary approvals after that date.
Yeah, we talked about some details on Wednesday about this. Um,
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the revocable license agreement for temporary restaurant seating in the public right of way for Grow Cafe and Bistro.
Well, second.
Motion Stanton, second Muncy. Uh, any further discussion? We did discuss this at some length uh, on Wednesday. Hey, hearing none. This is a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Any opposed? None opposed? Passes. Uh, G, another revocable license. This one is Tree of Life, also a voice vote, one forty-five of the packet.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Motion to approve the revocable license agreement for temporary restaurant seating in the public right of way for Tree of Life Juice, JSL Juice LLC.
Second. Motion Baldwin, second Lewis. Once again, uh, discussed on Wednesday at our workshop. Um, any other thoughts from council, questions, comments? I don't see any. Let's uh, let's call call the question. Uh, this is a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? None? Motion passes. Uh, we're at H, Special Event Waterfront Invitational Fine Art Fair. Another voice vote, page one forty-three, one fifty-three. Also discussed at our workshop on Wednesday.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the Waterfront Invitational Fine Art and Craft Fair to take place on July first, twenty twenty-three and July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, organized by the Sagatuck Douglas Art Club.
Second.
Motion Stanton, second Gardner. Uh, any discussion?
Uh, the only comment I would make is that this has been going on since I can remember. So the Invitational Front uh, that that is probably in my mind, the oldest art fair in the city. And it's just it's it's just wonderful. It's just it's it's a great tradition for them to do this and they just just fully support it.
I'd also like to add and congratulate them on their, they've been an organization for seventy years and Betty York or the president has uh, has let us know their uh, their membership has almost tripled in the last two years. So so it's a great organization.
Agreed. Couldn't agree more. Uh, if there's no further discussion, um, I'd like to uh, call a voice vote on this. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? None? Motion passes. Uh, we now are at item I, proclamation number two three zero five two two dash P one Pride Month. This is a voice vote on page one sixty-six, also discussed uh, on Wednesday.
Mayor? Go ahead, Garn. Motion to approve proclamation number two three zero five two two dash P one Designating June twenty-third as Pride Month in the city of Sagatuck and proclaiming that pride flags will be on display at Sagatuck City Hall throughout the month of June.
I'll second.
Motion Lewis, second Muncy. Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, we are now at uh, item J. This is Rules of Procedure Amendment, City Council Agenda. This is a voice vote. It's on page one sixty-eight. Um, as we discussed on Wednesday, this is really fairly pro forma. It's just to um, add to our agenda so we can uh, give Lauren the ability during planning and zoning to also give us a quick report from the um, short-term rental task force.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, motion to approve the amendment to the city council rules and procedures for meetings originally adopted on July twenty-third, two thousand and seven and last revised on January ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Motion Stanton, second Gardner. Uh, any discussion?
Lewis.
I'm sorry, Lewis. Sorry, Stanton and uh, Lewis. Sorry. No discussion. Uh, this is a also a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, none opposed? Any opposed? None opposed? Motion passes. Uh, that takes us to this this special we have here. We've added it to our agenda earlier this evening. It is item K. It is Duck Alley Right of Way signage request. Ryan, lead us through it, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, Weedman Outdoors LLC uh, submitted a an application to install a six point two five square foot uh, projecting sign. Uh, they are uh, bringing a new restaurant to Culver Street at two twenty Culver Street uh, called Duck Alley. And so um, they have a soft opening uh, coming up soon and we wanted to kind of get that that sign up, uh, but a sign that um, encroaches into your right of way needs uh, your permission uh, to be there. And so um, so I appreciate the consideration uh, for adding this uh, this evening. Uh, similar to the book nook during your last meeting, um, uh, this revocable license agreement would allow them to have the sign that does project over the sidewalk. It would be at least seven foot off the ground. All of you have been provided with a copy of the application, uh, the agreement to review and then uh, uh, an image of what the sign would look like. Um, I did provide the city attorney and city manager with a copy as well, so everybody's on the same page as far as what's in your been added uh, in your packet this evening.
Great. Um, can I can I get a motion before discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the revocable license agreement for a sign in the public right of way for Weedman Outdoors LLC.
And I'll second that.
Motion, motion, second Stanton, uh, second Muncy. Um, this seems similar to what we had with the book nook. Uh, normally I normally I I think staff would appreciate a little bit more heads up on this so they can get it ready for our workshops. Um, but I think, you know, tight deadline here, summer season's starting. So go, go, of course, Garnet, please.
Did, does this need Historic District Commission approval also? Is it? It's in the Historic District.
Right. So it will need uh, typically signs in Historic District are able to be administratively approved, so he will receive a permit through that process, but yep, just checking.
Yep, thank you. Good, good, good question, Garn. Um, yeah, I this roughly similar dimensionally to the book nook sign?
This is dimensionally similar to actually what was there with one butter and whiskey was there. Size wise, it'd be very similar.
Okay, all right.
And I understand there's going to be at least seven feet clearance, right? Because if you look at the picture, I know I know it's probably a graphic that was given, but it looks a lot bigger in the picture, probably.
You're not going to bunk your head.
Correct. Scale wise, yeah, I think it's
It's good.
We making sure that we're radiating, reiterating that.
Right.
So.
All right. So that's uh, any other discussion from council on that?
I just wish I wish them well. New business in Sagatuck, we always want to wish them well.
Wish them the best.
Yeah, good point. So with that, uh, this I'm assuming we can handle this as a voice vote, Jamie. Yeah. So all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? None? Motion passes. Uh, that concludes our new business for this evening. We are now in the public comment phase. So this is open to any topic. Uh, please limit your remarks to three minutes and uh, once again, for the clerk's benefit, identify yourself and place of residence. Uh, Dan Fox, please.
And Fox, I'm going to speak as the as the representative to the Fire Board simply to uh, express on behalf of Fire District Board, on behalf of Chief Janik, and most importantly in my mind, on behalf of all of those firefighters and EMTs out at the uh, firehouse, their appreciation for your prompt, for your involvement and your questions and your prompt attention to the budget. And we look forward to to your point, continuing the that process pretty much as laid out this year in future years since it works so well. So thank you all.
Hey, Dan. Uh, anyone else in the audience that wishes to offer public comment? I'm seeing none. I'm going to turn it over to the Zoom. Any, I don't see any hands raised. Uh, I don't see one. I see one phone unmuted, but I don't see. Is there any public comment uh, on the Zoom? No, I don't see any. I will close public comment then. And that will take us to correspondence. No correspondence. Uh, we are now at uh, council comments. Uh, let's start with Garn tonight.
Uh, yeah, just a couple of things. Um, the Michigan Municipal League, uh, I'm I've been appointed to the Economic and Land Use Committee and we had our first meeting this last Friday and it was it was very interesting. If you ever find yourself wanting to participate in the league committees, you end up talking through quite a bit of legislation that's coming forward. So we talked through probably ten pieces of legislation uh, that are coming forward. Primarily, I wanted to mention it to you because the theme throughout all of them pertain to local control and the league's commitment to upholding local control. So um, it's it's interesting, the theme of some of these, the STRS is going to come back up again. It's introduced by one particular party and some other um, groups. Um, and there's still this, you know, this need to say, local control is being protected. How's that? Um, and then there was a really informative live with the league today. Um, also, our state representative was in town Saturday for uh, coffee and I had a chance to talk with him about a couple of things. Uh, one in particular was the uh, remote meetings. And I had a chance to talk with him about a couple of things. One in particular was the remote meetings again. And that piece of legislation will probably come up in the fall. I didn't realize that in order to amend that, to allow for more flexibility, it takes 50 amendments, because it's all OMA-related. So he said literally every, just about every representative will be able to offer up an amendment in order to get that through. So that's in the works and it's coming. Lastly, tomorrow, the sixth graders go out for salmon in the classroom. And I think some folks get to go participate. Have yourselves a great time. It's always wonderful. That's it.
Thank you, Garn.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. At last Thursday's part, planning commission meeting, there was a comment made about parking, of all things. And something that I think that the city should begin, begin discussing, and it was brought up to me at the, at the police and community meeting back in March. There are certain streets, Pleasant Street, Main Street, that have parking on both sides of the street. And there's times of the year where it literally is unsafe because of parking allowed on both sides of the street for school events, as well as just summer visitors. So I would suggest, or not suggest, I'm asking that the city begin working with the police and the fire district to begin looking at the streets and the Department of Public Works to look at streets that need to be restricted on at least one side of the street to make it safe. And so that was brought up at the planning commission, as well as I just want to acknowledge, if you know where Herbert Street is, you know where Herbert Street is?
Yes.
Okay. Bruce Simonson was this Department of DPW superintendent for 50-plus years. That street is named after our current DPW superintendent's great-grandfather, correct? So the Herbert family has a great record of service in town, and I'm always interested in street names in town. So tonight I learned it was Scott's great-grandfather. So thank you.
Um, Short Term Rental Task Force, just wanted to update you. We're still meeting every two weeks at this point. The last task force meeting, we had a lot of talk about just what our current ordinances are. So the task force was up to date on exactly what we have on the books right now and the audience members, of course, because a lot of the audience doesn't know exactly what's on our books currently. And so we were able to go through all of that and ask a lot of questions. There were a ton of questions. It was great. It was extremely well-attended, both on Zoom and in person. Our consulting firm also showed us examples of, you know, at least a half dozen, or probably a dozen or more, different communities and different ordinances that they have and different ways that they're, you know, dealing with certain issues. But there's some unique ones that we're taking a deeper dive on. So that should be interesting. So a lot going on. We meet again in just another week, too. Yep. And again, please keep coming to those meetings. You know, everybody has a lot of questions and it, and it's great. So we're going to keep it going.
Just want to remind everybody, this week, the Sagatuck Douglas Garden Club will be beautifying our area. And I'll be doing a talk with the sixth graders about why it's so important to keep our town beautiful. They'll also have cookies and treats over at Pumper Nichols for their reward of planting boxes all around town and helping to beautify the town. They also have bed sprout town that they do as well. It's a great service and they're all done by volunteers. And, and we do help pay a little bit, just a small little drop to pay the kids, the sixth graders during the summer, to keep them all watered. But I think it's a great program. I've helped them with that program through the Business Association and other, other ways throughout the years. And like to see that keep going. Also Memorial Day is coming up. I want to wish everybody a great Memorial Day weekend. And our parade on Monday will be at 9:00 AM in Sagatuck. And the same parade gets packed up after their ceremony at the park here, the Veterans Park or the Play Park. They'll pack it all up and then they'll do it in Douglas at 10:00 AM, while they had their ceremony in, at the Berry Field. They'll start the parade at the grocery store there and have it down the street there. So, so two parades and, and, and one great day, so.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Gregory. Helen?
No comments at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. I'll just pick up where Gregory left off. I mean, it's a, going to be a busy and really fun seven days. And it looks like we've got some wonderful weather, but you know, we, we, Garnet mentioned the sixth graders fishing. I want to flag for everybody Thursday, 5:30 in the Rose Garden, very generous donation from Mozzie Galleries. We have a new sculpture called Whispers. It's a beautiful piece of art and it's really going to look great in the, in the Rose Garden. So a number of us will be there for that, that event. And Sagatuck High School will be having their commencement also on Thursday at 6 o'clock. So some of us will be very busy trying to be two places at once, but looking forward to the high school commencement for the senior class. And yes, the parade, we can't forget the parade. It's going to be a great day. And if I don't see the rest of you or any of you at some point during the long weekend, have a great Memorial Day. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A second.
I'll make a motion to adjourn immediately.
Oh, second.
Okay. Motion second, Muncy. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Me and adjourn.
Very good.